And to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, God and God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
For members who have the agenda. I may vote for that. Motion by the head. Second by the head. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? I'm Jim Harris. Next on the agenda Sandy, Paul, and Alex.
Thank you. We of course want to highlight our Paul and Alex in our wonderful season. With us this evening is Ben Peters. There he is. He is the man in charge of the evening we call athletics. I'll let him take it from here.
As I said, as she said, my name is Ben Peters. I am representing Mr. Box tonight. She is an athletic director. She's Nat, an athletic director. I am a student athletic ambassador. And so I'm here to introduce everybody. We have many state competitors in boys and girls cross country, girls golf, and girls tennis. First off, I'd like to introduce the cross country team and Coach Grubel will be talking about their great season.
This is the cross country team. First, I'd like to thank you for having us here tonight. And our season was a great season. We had, oh yeah, we had our ups and downs, but overall we had a terrific season. First with the girls on the end is Erin Westside and next to her is Katie. They represented us at the state meet. And they were also, they also helped us produce one of the best girls teams we had this year. And hopefully next year we will continue with this success. And Katie was our number one runner for the team. And in most of the way she was number one. And she won most of the races. She finished as conference champion this year. And her sister Erin was the second runner on the girls team throughout the season. At the state meet, Katie was 14th out of 190 runners. And she was also on the second team all state. She would be also on the academic all state team. And then her sister Erin was 81st on 190. And she was a little upset with her performance, but she was the first time there. And as a freshman, you have to expect that it's not going to be always the way you want it to be. So she will be back next year along with the 83rd. Now, the boys team, they have Ben Peters, Thomas Christiansen. Ben Johnson, excuse me. Thomas Christiansen. Martin Tyus, Matt Wilkins, Ryan Grover, and Tim DeGont. Now, these boys are seniors except for Thomas Christiansen and Ryan Grover. They're sophomores. So we have two sophomores and some seniors. So we have a big road to have us developing our team for national. But the boys won the conference meet for the sixth consecutive year. They were second in sectionals to the Cross Open. The Cross Open had been us all season long. And I was hoping that we didn't take them, but didn't have because you're. And at state meet, they were eighth out of 20 teams. Most of them were all conference. So they keep working with them as well. Ben Johnson here as your coaches. And he ran the success by just a hundred percent.
Season. And he didn't end up in worse condition than he did. But, and I didn't really know about all this going on. So, but proud to have all these guys and the two gals on the end out this year. And they really helped develop our team. That's about it, I guess. Thank you much.
Congratulations.
Because we are having our football play tonight. We had a brawl. And we were three and four for the Rivers Conference. The highlight of our season is when we went to an awfully on their homecoming. At the time, they were six and oh.
And we were able to give them one of the biggest upsets. We gave them their only loss of the season, which was a pretty big honor. We beat them, we've beaten them for the past three years. We earned the title of team of the week on WIS Sports, which was also pretty cool to get that honor. Also, we beat the River Falls Wildcats for our second year in a pretty big cross, or pretty big rivalry. So it was a great season and we look forward to building on it next year. And yeah, that's about it for football. Next on the list is girls golf. I don't believe we have any representatives here. So I'll just go ahead and say how their season went. Their coaches are Jackie Gunderson and assistant coach was Ed Rankin. Cassie Worm, she is a junior. She was named the second time BRC Player of the Year. And she went to state individually and she placed eighth. It was her second time at state and she did very well. The girls golf team had quite a season of rebuilding after losing three seniors last year. But there was a lot of progress and there's a lot of promise for the next season. And it was a very good, very good season for them. And Cassie Worm was named all conference first team. So it was a very productive season for the girls golf. Give a hand for them. Next, we have the boys soccer team coached by Coach Bublitz. And we have Chris Bergland and J.C. Tontalion to talk about their season.
All right, I'm Chris Bergon, one of your co captains for the 2010 season.
I'm J.C. Tontalion, another captain.
This year was kind of a building year for our team.
Gentlemen, can you just come a little closer to the microphone? That way we can pick it up for taping a little bit better.
Sure thing. Okay. All right, this year was kind of a building season. We lost a total of about 11 seniors last year, most of which were starters. So we had to take in quite a few freshmen and quite a few sophomores this year. So, but overall, most of the games that we did have, we were right, we're right there in it and right there to the end of the fight. So it was, it was a productive year, but our record didn't obviously show that, so.
No, we, this year was more chemistry than skill. We made a lot of good friends. I mean, like last year wasn't good chemistry. We had our own little cliques and stuff. So I don't think that was our downfall, but this year was really good. We connected with freshmen, sophomores, juniors, which usually seniors don't, you know. Not that big, but we made a lot of good friends, a lot of good people. We had fun on the bus ride at home. Sometimes got in trouble, but you know, just kids having fun, not big trouble. And yeah, we didn't do as good as we wanted to, but we set high goals for ourselves and we tried our hardest, so.
I'd say probably the highlight of our season is losing only 1-0 to Brookfield East down in Brookfield. They were number one in Wisconsin the entire year, so. Yeah, that's it.
All right, next up, we have the girls swimming and diving team coached by Dick Clark and Katie Zappa and Kelly Hackbarth. And we have three swimmers and divers to talk about their season. Throw a hand.
Hi, I'm Amanda Baker and I'm a diver. And we had a really good season.
A little closer to the microphone, Amanda.
We had a really good.
A little closer.
We had a really good season this year. We had a winning season with six and three. And we got third in conference.
I'm Kendall Tierney. I'm a sophomore and a diver. And we placed eighth in our sectional meet.
And I'm Hannah Van Valkenburg and I'm a senior and I'm a swimmer. And we had Amanda Baker going to state also. And we also had a bunch of people placing in conference and sectionals too. So it was a good season for us. It was awesome, so.
All righty, next up, we have the girls tennis team coached by Dave Dahl. And we have two state qualifiers and competitors to talk about their season.
Hi, I'm Morgan Caris. I was a captain this year for the girls tennis. And we had a winning record of 19 and six. And that put us in second place for conference this year. Whitney can talk about state.
At state, we had two teams go, both of us, which are the number one Devils team and our number two Devils team also went. And overall, we placed in the, sorry. We placed in the top 16 teams at state of like 400 teams throughout Wisconsin in division one, which was awesome. We never thought we'd get that far, but it was so satisfying like our senior year. And then the two juniors, Casey Fall and Jenny Fastbinder, they topped, they placed in the top 32. And hopefully they'll be back next year to improve. So it's been a great season.
Congratulations.
All righty, next, we have the girls volleyball team. We have Ashley Fall and Amber Sadoff to talk about their season.
Hi, I'm Ashley Fall and I'm a captain of the volleyball team.
I'm Amber Sadoff. The volleyball team was coached by my father, Dennis Sadoff, and assistant coached by Pete Galuska.
The varsity volleyball team had a successful season even though we were 2-4, the record in the conference. We finished the season with 21-11 overall and took first in our home tournament and first in the Northwestern tournament. We finished our season with a loss in the regional final against Eau Claire North. And they were seeded number one in our conference. It was a fun season. The girls played hard and had a good result for the show. And our Eau Claire North game summed up our whole season. We actually beat, we played till four games. It was a battle, every single point. What was the last game? It was like within two points each game. And we actually ended up winning a game out of five, which was awesome. And that just showed, and we had four girls on the bench that were hurt. Right before practice, we had a girl who like tore her ACL the practice before. So we had to build together and finish the season off with a good note.
Congratulations.
All right, that wraps it up for fall sports. And we look forward to our winter sports getting to go, or getting going. I know boys hockey are starting trials this week, as well as a bunch of other teams are getting ready to go. And we look forward to seeing you at the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Ben, thank you for your job as a student athletic ambassador. Nicely done. Okay, Sandy, high school musical.
All right. Hello, Dolly is the high school musical this fall. And they are currently in dress rehearsal and we're going to try to be here. So if we can be a little flexible, I don't know, I don't see anyone here yet. I will say dates though, so just in case they're not able to get away. November 12th, 13th, 14th. And the 19th, 20th, and 21st are the show dates. Friday and Saturday, the show begins at seven and Sunday at two. And we encourage everyone to attend.
And where can you buy tickets, Sandy?
The box office is open. I don't know the hours off the top of my head, but the box open office is open, I believe, in the mornings. And then from like three to seven in the evenings, Monday through Friday.
Okay. Well, we'll move on Sandy, if they show up, perhaps we can slide them back into the agenda. But if we could move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'm going to first start with, I feel very good to be able to tell you that the district has received the Energy Star Leader Award from the Environmental Protection Agency. And this is really an award for improving our energy efficiency by 10%. That was over the, a year. And it started with a baseline in 2008. And then it was the, the school year of 2009 or moving into 2009. That savings for that energy reduction was approximately $135,000. And so as we look at that towards the future, certainly that saves our taxpayers that, those funds over time. And that $135,000 in the energy that we're talking about can be compared to reducing greenhouse gas emissions by more than 1,500 metric tons per year. Now, that may not mean a lot to most of us sitting up here. But the equivalent of that is planting more than 350 acres of trees. So pretty significant for the district. And this commitment began, you'll remember back when the board accepted Lieutenant Governor Barbara Lawton's energy challenge to reduce our energy consumption by 10%. And then the board hired the Energy Management Service at no additional cost. It comes out of the savings to really create for us a comprehensive energy management plan. And as we moved forward with our new energy managers from CISA 10, the phase one of that plan was really to do an in-depth assessment of our buildings and their operations and their energy efficiency and look for where we could save. This effort, we need to give credit to Jim Stayskill, who led this effort, to our custodians, who worked very diligently in our buildings to help create this energy savings. And then to our financial service director, Tim Erickson, who was in charge of the entire effort. As we think about how that occurred, I also want to give credit to our technology coordinator, Nancy Toll, who also looked at her department and made some very significant changes that reduced the energy consumption from all of the technology that we use throughout the district. The phase two, once we made sure that all of our HVAC systems were operating at high efficiency, was to help educate our, the staff members about what each of us could do to help save energy. And so that was the next phase. We had energy reductions plans in each of the buildings. And that was really actions that staff could take to do that. We did things like reducing the number, reducing or eliminating the number of individual plugins. And really went to say a coffee pot that didn't, isn't in one classroom, but serves a group of classrooms. So those kinds of changes. We also looked at lights. If you leave a building or a room, certainly the lights, we are better at turning those lights off now at this point. And also making a decision about, do we need the lights? You know, if it's a room that has good lighting, we need to make a decision about how much light we actually need. There were places where we went from one switch in a room to two switches so that you could actually use less of the lighting in the room. And those kinds of accommodations or modifications have really created this energy reduction for us. You know, the district continues to raise the bar in our, for ourselves, about our goals for energy usage. And we continue to move forward with higher expectations than just a 10% reduction. So we'll be looking at that in the future. We, as we become better consumers of energy, we also model this for our students. And we think of our HSD 2025 graduate learner outcome and environmental sustainability. That's one of the things that we want for our students as well, to be good consumers of energy for the future. So we hope that what we learned, we can communicate to our students and they can carry it home to their families. And we can make a huge impact in how much energy we use, saving our environment and our natural resources as well. So congratulations to the board for the commitment and to our staff who have worked very diligently and been really stepped up to this commitment and taken it on. You know the work of our R3 committee, our Reduce, Reuse, Recycle Committee and what they've moved forward. And I'd like to have Tim Erickson, Director of Financial Services, present the award to President Barb Van Loonan. Thanks, Tim, for your leadership in that certainly it's a district-wide effort and it starts with leadership.
Any other questions or comments from the board? I do think it's a, it's a great piece of work and congratulations really to the district for all the work that, and effort that's gone into that. I think it, not only it allows us to say that we're being good stewards of the environment, but we are really modeling something that we want our students to learn as well. So thank you. All right. Mayor, if you want to continue with the next item under superintendent's report?
Certainly. This item is on the number of Hudson administrators. From time to time, I get asked about the number of administrators that we've added over time and what that looks like. So I thought it would be important for us to bring that to a board meeting and share that information. And in comparison, we're really starting with looking at the year 2005, 2006 and comparing that all the way through to 2010, 11, the current school year. Over that same period of time, just to put it in perspective, we have added 576 more students. We have 66.5 more staff full-time equivalents. And I'll talk about what that is in a few minutes. We've added one more elementary school, a district office, and one more administrator from 2005, '06 to 2010, '11 during that six-year period. Diane, if you would turn then to the second page that we have, where the graphs and the charts start. I'll talk from that. And I'd like to start with chart number one. And this chart shows the number of Hudson students per administrator compared to the state average. So if we look at 2005, '06, the number of administrators we have in the district and for administrators, we're talking about superintendent, the directors, the associate directors, the principals at each building, and the associate principals. I hope I didn't miss anybody. Catch me if I did. So in '05, '06, we had 18 administrators on staff. And then over that six-year time period, you can see from the numbers that it has fluctuated with a low of 17 and a high of 20 administrators. And when we get to the current year, we have 19 administrators. And I see us continuing with 19 administrators into the future. At, at least at the present time, I don't see a need to add unless our numbers of students in the buildings, say at the middle school or the high school, would get to a point where, where that was needed to support their work. So I think we're really at the number that we need to do the work in the district presently. And then if we look at the students again, we'd had 576 additional students. So if you compare the number of administrators and the number of students, the number of students per administrator has gone up over that six-year period. It is higher. It started in 2005, '06, again with 275.2 students per each administrator. And then this year, that has risen to 291 students per administrator if we look across the district. Comparing that to the state average, and you might notice right away when you look at the column with the state average, that there are no numbers for 2009, '10, and '10, '11. And that's because we, the state average doesn't keep up current day. They're usually about two years behind. And so we don't have that data to show you. So we just, it stops at 2008, '09, but we continued on with our own, our own data over that time. But if you look at the numbers in 2008, '09 and compare it to how many students per administrator in Hudson, we're well above the state average. And then looking up at the chart itself, or the graph one itself, you can see the blue line is really the number of students per administrator. And I really just want to point out, don't get confused and think that's the number of administrators in the district. That's above the state average. It is the number of students per administrator. And you can see that that number for all of these years has been above the state average. And then the red line being the state average. If we move on to the, let's go to chart two then, Diane. That is the number of staff FTE, comparing that, staff per administrator. Now, full-time equivalent, 1.0 means that's a full-time person. And it, actually, it's not a full-time person, it's a full-time position. And the note says it can often represent more than one employee. So let me talk about what that means. So we know what we're talking about when we talk about FTEs. A teacher is a full-time equivalent, so it's 1.0. Now, we have many people in the district that are part-time people. And so they add up to a portion of an FTE or a full FTE when we had multiple people. Some people are in multiple roles. So they may have a role in one building and a role in another building and a role in another building. And each of those pieces adds up to get the FT, the total FTE across the district. So for example, if we took our crossing guards and we looked at the full year and their work, they, in FTE, they would be .087. So you can see it would take quite a few crossing guards to be a 1.0. So, and if we took an educational assistant who is working three hours in the district during the school year, that would be a .305 FTE. So one FTE sometimes represents a person, one person. And oftentimes it does not, particularly when we get to support staff. It's multiple people that they often represent. I have to just put a qualifier on this as we look at the data. You know, we have, with new systems coming in place and so forth, our system of tracking staff for 2010, '11 is sophisticated. When we look at 2005, '06, it served us at that time, but it is not at the same level of sophistication. So it's much harder for us to look at that data and get data out of those numbers as we can with '10, '11. And so we are, we wanted to really translate this into people instead of FTE, but we really don't have the ability to do that without an enormous amount of staff hours to actually count and make sure we're not duplicating and so forth. So we did go to the FTE, which becomes much more confusing. But what I can tell you from this, and looking at that chart, you can see 2005, '06, and then comparing it to 2010, '11, that the number of staff FTE per administrator has gone up. Now, if you just look at those numbers themselves, it doesn't look significant. But when you think about how many people it represents, then it starts to be very significant. So our best estimate of as close as we could get, and we know this isn't exact, that's at least 100 more people over that time period. It may be more, and it's very likely to be more. But just thinking about that, you know that those FTEs equal more people. And we have more people that administrators would supervise and evaluate during that time period. On the, the next page, we list each of the administrators. I told you the groups that we talked about. And I'd be happy to take any questions that you have. I guess I have one last thing to say. You know, we're, we're at a time where our students are learning at higher levels. This is being led by our administrators. And we have more students per administrator. And I think that that's one thing we just need to recognize, that the work of our administrators, we've changed the work of our administrators. And we have higher expectations for that work if we look back to 2005, 2006. And yet we have more students per administrator as we're growing as a district. Madam President, be happy to answer questions?
Other questions from the board?
Yeah, I guess, Madam President, a couple of comments, I guess, more.
Yeah, I guess, Madam President, a couple of comments, I guess, more than questions. First, I want to say that I recognize the importance of our administration in our school system. And we have a strong administrative team. I don't know everybody very well, but I can certainly say that I know the people at this table very well. And for the folks at this table, they're some of the most capable and hardest-working people I've ever had the pleasure of working with. And I have no reason to doubt that that doesn't carry through our whole system. Having said that, just, I want to add a couple of comments. One is while I know we've only added one administrator over this five-year period, I think we should acknowledge that there have been some additional administrative positions that are now in place to support administrators. So, there is that backdrop that I think has to be put into context. While there may only be one additional administrator, there have been administrative positions added as needed. And the ones that we've added have been necessary, and as I recall by and large, I've supported them. So, I just want to make note of that. By way of comparisons, and you've probably heard me say this before, but I've spent 25 years in large government bureaucracies, and they're not models of efficiency. And so, when I see comparisons to where we may be with our school districts, I do not, that is not for me a compelling argument that we are understaffed with respect to administration. It may be the case, but I'm certainly not going to accept that on its face. I think there's probably a lot of inefficiencies out there. We may be the ones that they should be pointing at as far as administrative structure goes. But once again, I want to finish like I started. I think we have a strong administrative team. I support the members. They do great work, and I am behind them 100 percent.
Could I respond to that? Please.
I appreciate you recognizing the work of the administrators. And I just want to go back to, I want to address your comment about we're understaffed because I don't agree, I don't think so either. As I said in the beginning, I think the 19 administrators we have are the right numbers to do the work that we have in the district, even though the expectations are higher, even though the results that we're achieving with our students are higher. I do believe we're right where we need to be. The only reason I give the comparison information is it's really hard for us to, you know, understand, well, okay, so many students per administrator, what does that mean? So, again, I endorse your comments as well. I would say that I think we've worked very hard at efficiency in the district, and because we have not as, we have more students per administrator, we have to be more efficient.
Any other questions? I would like to add just one comment and really amplify what you said, Mark, which is I do think that, first of all, I appreciate the work that, Mary, you and the team did in putting this together because undoubtedly, we've all been asked the question, what about the administrator, administrative structure at the district offices? And so, this is very helpful as background information, I think, for all of us on the board. And while I love your comment about is that the right benchmark for us to be looking at, I have a different benchmark doing this work professionally and having done it for several decades in large and small organizations. I have a different data point that I can compare to the size of the structure at our district offices and can say, in my experience, we are running a very lean ship, and this group is doing an amazing amount of work, whether we're talking about people at the manager level or at the administrator level, based on my professional experience doing finance and HR work, which is a lot of what gets done in the service center. So, thank you to the administrators for the work that you are doing. Okay. We are now into reports, and the first item on the agenda in that section is the educational cost per student. Tim and Sandy.
Okay, I'll start off. If you look at the chart that's been put together, this is information that DPI compiles each year. And we've chosen to look at high-performing districts, and these are the ones that Sandy refers to in her reports when we're looking at student performance. And the top section is sorted by membership, and I just want to make a comment on membership. Membership units here in this report refer to our aided membership. That's how we, how the state calculates aid for us based on the student numbers. So, there are things that are added in that make this number different from some of our other numbers for students in that summer schools added in that makes a fairly large impact of over, about over 100 units. And then we've got some other differences. But I just want to make that note, that there are differences in that number for the membership.
Madam President, could I just add on to that? So, what Tim's talking about that's important for us to just point out is the report that you just heard, if you would look at the enrollment numbers and compare them right here, they would be different because they are not the same as Tim talked about. There are more in this number than the enrollment numbers.
That's right. So, with that said, if we look at the membership section, high-performing districts, and this is the 2008-2009 data, that's the latest year that's available. And Hudson is, in this instance, ranked number two in size in number of students compared to those 10 districts. And then what we've done is we've pulled out the data on what's called total educational cost per member. And so, that's total educational cost per student, really. And what that includes is the cost of the district's general fund, special education, and debt service. So, you add all of those costs together, and then you divide by your number of student membership units. And in this particular example, when you look at the information for '08-'09, you can see even though we ranked second in membership, the cost per member for Hudson is $10,657. So, its rank is number 10. And you can see Elm Brook at the top with $12,745 per member, and you can see all of the other, all of the other districts in between. If we go and compare ourselves, again, taking the same information, comparing ourselves to the Big Rivers Conference, you can see assorted by membership, Hudson ranked second at 5,471 members. And then sorted again by the total educational cost per member in that second box down below, Hudson is ranked number five. So, again, when we look at, you know, certainly efficiency and overall costs of educating our students. And so, with that, I'll hand it over to Sandy.
Thank you. I made contacts with all the districts on the high-performing side, on the left side there, seeking information on just initiatives they have currently going on, systems that they're putting in place, you know, what is it that you do to be a high-performing district? And out of that analysis came pretty much three patterns that were coming out pretty clear. One, I can confidently say Hudson is on the right path. I found similar work being done in all of those high-performing districts. They are working to implement a systems approach to improving student learning. That was loud and clear. Two, they are focused on the work that we're doing, but it's been for a longer period of time. So, it appears that the things that we're doing, you know, in a two, three years, you know, there'll even be more impact. They've been added longer than we have. It also appeared too that you found that the leadership had been consistent. So, at the superintendent level, the superintendents had been there for a longer period of time working on that systems approach, and/or people within the system kind of moved up through the system. So, again, there was consistency throughout their upper administration. And then number three, I also found that they have more learning support positions at both the district and the school level. So, some examples would be, if we start with some of the initiatives of the high-performing districts that they have in place that are very similar to us, one that I asked questions about was advanced placement because we're working very hard to get more students involved in advanced placement. And currently, Hudson has 12 advanced placement courses. The range of AP courses in those districts that I contacted was from a low of seven to a high of 20 AP courses, with the median being 14. So, we're not far from there. And as you know, almost every year, we're coming at least with one more AP course. So, again, they've been at that longer. We're not far behind. Another area I investigated was PLTW, the Project Lead the Way, the pre-engineering course. Again, we are in our second year of implementation, just one quarter into that second year. Menominee Falls began PLTW in 2006. So, that means they've been at it five years, and they also have it at the middle school level. Kettle Moraine has also had the high school and middle school PLTW program for five years. Franklin Public already has three courses in place. Whitefish Bay started in 2008, so it's been three years. And Mequon-Thensville plans to start their fourth course at the high school next year. So, again, similar program, just been added a longer time. During the process, as I was talking to many of the districts, they also mentioned other initiatives that were currently in place that I just wanted to mention, things like, well, all of these initiatives show evidence again of starting out perhaps at the elementary, rolling up, or at the middle level, rolling up. But again, that time factor is very important. The other piece is that they're very similar to what we're doing. And here are some of the examples, like hiring, a focus being hiring the best teachers. That was consistent. Balanced assessment initiatives going on, a rigorous evaluation system, collaboration time, balanced literacy, and then also beginning the pre-ACT assessments that we're also investigating currently. The next area I investigated then was just the learning support positions that support the work that's going on. And again, if we look at what Hudson currently has, we have one reading specialist at five of our elementaries, and then our smallest school, Holt, and we have a .6. We also have some reading and math assistants, but not certified teachers. We have a 1.5 reading specialist at the middle school. And then you are aware too that we have 2.5 literacy coaches. So, that's kind of what we have here. At Cedarburg, they have two full-time reading specialists at two of their elementary schools, the larger one, and 1.5 at their smaller school. They also have a .45 FTE instructional coach who works solely with new teachers. Whitefish Bay has approximately two reading and math support teachers in each building. Elm Brook has a reading and math specialist at every school. And then Menominee Falls has 5.4 FTE curriculum support specialist for their four elementary and one middle school. And then a half-time coach at the middle and the high school. So, just a little comparison for us to see what kinds of positions other districts have in place. At the district level, you find a variety of positions, but some that are unique that we don't currently have. Cedarburg has a district assessment and data analysis leader, that's an administrative position, an assessment coordinator, and two district diagnosticians, again, data people. Elm Brook has an assistant superintendent of educational services, but that person is supported with a director of assessment and a director of curriculum. So, again, as, you know, Tim and I were doing our data, what came out is we're on the right path, very similar programs going on, they've been added longer, but really working at our systems approach is exactly what we need to do.
Mary?
Sandy, one of the things I thought we talked about, but I'm not sure, I didn't think I heard, but, correct me, is strong emphasis on professional development as well.
Correct. That would have been one of the initiatives. Thank you.
Brian?
Couple of questions. First of all, appreciate the, that was pretty interesting calling up those other districts and doing some investigative, or just doing benchmarking. When you said rigorous evaluation, what does that mean? What does that mean, rigorous evaluation?
The evaluation process of their teachers, of their employees, as far as the system they put in place to ensure that they have quality going on in the classroom instructional.
So, what's the, after four years, if the evaluation doesn't go well, what's their course of action?
Brian, I didn't get into details, but just to know that it's exactly what we've done here, our evaluation process the last few years has definitely changed and become more aligned with the work that we want to have happen.
So, and just one other comment is, I think it's good to have this data about the spend per member, but I'm strongly in the camp that I think hopefully a lot of the school board members agree with me is, there's, I'm strongly in the camp where just spending more money does not necessarily equate to better results. So, just want to be on record on that one.
Any other comments? Questions? Okay, thank you. And so, now we are moving on to middle school addition construction update. Tim?
Okay. This will be more of a pictorial update than I've done in the past because over the past month, we've had a lot of changes. The building's been really, the addition's been really moving along. And I want to thank Jim Stayschool, he went out and took some pictures of the project yesterday. And so, the first piece, just so that you can get acclimated to where things are, you can see the floor plan, how it's laid out. And if you look directly to the north, you can see the existing elementary gym, Hudson Prairie Gym, the cafeteria, and then down to the left or on the west side, the existing middle school cafeteria, and then boiler, pool, and some equipment rooms. So, those really surround the three walls of the addition. And then with the addition, again, we've got the orchestra classroom, the weight room slash FIED, and the multipurpose. And so, if we go to the pictures, that first, the first photo is really looking down from the pool wall, the southeast corner of the addition. And if we go to the next picture, I'm going to go through these relatively quickly. We've got quite a few pictures here. This is the east wall of the addition, and this shows existing window openings. And the next picture is the northeast exit of the addition. And then we've got the north exit hallways, and the multipurpose room. And that's, the multipurpose room is the largest room in the addition, and that's about 30, almost 3,500 square feet. And then we've got, the next photo, we have the, this is the orchestra room looking east. So, looking out the east end of that, that's the piece that's not adjoined to the rest of the buildings. And then we've got the weight room and the south hallway. The weight room slash PE is about 1,200 square feet. And then we've got, in the next photo, we've got the bearing walls, and those are installed. And the next point, the next large piece in this process is to start to install the steel joists. And the next piece, again, bearing walls, showing the bearing walls installed and ready for those joists. And then we've got, in the final set of pictures, we've got the, a view looking down off the retaining wall, looking down towards the storage area. And if you remember, we've got about 1,600 square feet of storage below grade on the building. And then the next picture shows that we've got our base course compacted, and that's about ready for pavement, and that's looking east of the addition. And then the final picture shows what's called our borrow pit, and that was to excavate some materials, some good material that we took off-site, and we excavated out substandard material off the building site and just replaced the material from the borrow pit to the building site and vice versa. And we saved, we saved quite a bit of money doing that. So, that's just a picture showing that pit, and that's about 90 percent restored right now. So, any questions? By the way, I'll just mention, we're still on budget, and we're still on schedule at this point. So, any questions?
Dan?
Thanks, Tim. That's a good report. Couple of questions. As I look at the orchestra area, the weight room being adjacent to each other, I'm trying to recall if we've had a discussion about the sound, not only for the orchestra. I know from past projects that we've had, we've, you know, we've tried to be pretty sensitive about putting in, you know, so that there's no reverberation and that type of thing within those rooms.
Yes, there, there's soundproofing in between there so that we're addressing that.
Okay, so if somebody's working out lifting weights, we don't necessarily have that carrying over to some other room and vice versa?
Yes. That's right.
Depends if you're lifting all those big weights there, Dan.
Madam President? Lynn, please.
Tim, I'm wondering if you can speak to how the construction process has been as far as disruption to the classrooms or school or safety, how that's been as far as the experience for both the middle school and Prairie?
I, from my standpoint, it's gone very well. We've, you know, from a standpoint of safety, you know, we've really controlled the construction traffic in and out. We've also added some additional temporary staffing for noon time for kids. And I know Mary has also been out and talked to staff, so she may, she may have something additional to add there.
You know, when we think about the accommodations that Hudson Prairie is making, certainly they have added, they have three classrooms meeting in the building and taking up space. And then when we think of safety, they have made a number of accommodations on their playground. And then, when we think of safety, they have made a number of accommodations on their playground. But the place where they've made the most accommodations is really in FIAD. And Bill Shaw, Shaw, who is the FIAD teacher, has had to modify based on where he can, what outside area he can use, because the area that has been dug up is part of the playground that he uses for his classes. So, that's changed. It's different. He has a more limited area. We have some concern about, not student safety per se, but, you know, the effect of the wear and tear on the grass that's in the area that's left, because it's a smaller area, and it has heavy usage. He isn't able to move from one place to another. So, those are areas that are the most affected because of it. There has been some sound issues, but basically, they've been fairly minor in comparison to a construction project. But when you have a jackhammer, you know, it's going to be loud. And so, I just really compliment Hudson Prairie's staff and also the middle school staff, particularly those in the wing that is adjacent to this building project. And there are commendations to make this work. So, our staff has been, have been very flexible and accommodating. And their first priority has been, as well as Hoffman's, keeping our children safe. So, I commend them for their efforts to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope.
All right. Moving on to topics for action, it looks like we aren't going to get an update on the Fall Musical, Sandy. All right. So, the first item under topics for action is in relationship to the State Education Convention, which will occur in January. We do need to appoint a delegate and an alternate to that convention. I understand that we have two board members that are likely to attend the state convention. Dan Chernohoy and Pat German are any of the rest of us planning to attend the state convention? No? All right. Is there a volunteer? All right. So, I would love to see a motion from the floor. We need to act on a delegate, and it sounds like Pat German would be an appropriate delegate, and Dan Chernohoy is an alternate to the state convention. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mark.
Second.
Second by Lynn. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Pat. And thank you, Dan. All right. Consent agenda. If someone would read the language on the financial distributions, and we will move approval of the consent agenda items.
Madam President, move to approve the consent items, including the director of financial services be authorized to pay bills the amount of $1,955,831.48.
Motion by Brian?
Second.
Second by -- those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now on to committee reports. Brian, Finance Committee.
Okay. Finance Committee met on the 25th of October. We covered three things. First was the levy that was passed by the board in subsequent board meeting. The second was the financial forecast for the next three years. So, we have a lot of work to do there, and we're having a board meeting to discuss that, a special board meeting that's going to be posted as a meeting. And then, reviewed our first quarter financials, and we're on track in terms of our budget for this year.
Any questions for Brian from the Finance Committee?
Okay. Next on the list, learning and program development. And I am pulling up the agenda for that committee, which met on the 25th of October, and we had four items on the agenda. Corey McIntyre took the committee through an update on the work that his team has been engaged in around providing services to our gifted and talented students in the district. We did spend some time and approved a pilot for use, potential use of cell phones as a classroom technology tool at the high school level. And that pilot will take place over the course of the next couple of months, and then we will hear a report from the pilot in terms of what appropriate next steps might look like for that. Then, Corey took us through two additional updates. One was on a system around positive behavior intervention, and the final one was on functional behavior analysis. So, are there questions?
Madam President?
Yes.
Can you speak a little bit more about the high school cellphone?
I can. And then, I would ask Sandy to fill in the gaps here. From my notes, what I have is that one of the things that they're exploring, and they are in the exploration phases, but one of the things that they're exploring, if you've ever been in a large group setting where you have used an electronic voting device as a way to capture your response to a multiple-choice question, this is one of the things that they're looking at, using the cell phones from the students as a way to create some interaction between the students and the classroom teacher. And one of the things that we heard is that, you know, there are points in time where that is a way to engage students who otherwise would not be comfortable raising their hand and responding in the classroom. And so, again, it's just a pilot, but it is a way to try and explore using technology in the classroom. Let's see, Sandy, was there something, they talked about maybe podcasting for language classes that where they could use potentially their handheld device for that?
Correct. And then, the other one would be research, but it's starting out, if you're hearing that word pilot, we're talking like two, three teachers trying it out. There would be parent letters going home, students and parents having to sign off, so that it's very controlled to start and just check out before we move it, roll anything out any further.
All right. Next, committee report, facilities and grounds. And Lynn, I think you're going to take that on Tom's behalf.
I am, Madam President. Facilities and grounds committee met on Monday, November 1st. There were three items on the agenda. Tim Erickson has covered the middle school construction update, which was on our agenda. We also reviewed additional capital projects for the 2010, 2011. Those consisted of roofing projects, secured entrances at the middle school and Hudson Prairie, also a water infiltration project for the mezzanine at the high school, and then additional locker rooms at the middle school due to growth.
Questions for Lynn on facilities and grounds? Thank you, Lynn. And finally, Personnel Committee, Mark.
No, excuse me. Thank you, Madam President. Personnel Committee met last week. We had three items on our agenda. The first item was a revision to policy number 5109, which we approved earlier under the consent items. This was basically some, what I guess I would term some minor revisions to the policy as far as tightening up some of the language, and this was on the recommendation of our attorney, Mick Walzberger. Next, we had a report from Nancy Sweet on the process for determining staffing additions and reductions. I know many of you are familiar with this anyway. And we just, it was more or less, I guess, in the form of an update. I know earlier, I think, when Mary was making reference to this, she termed the system sophisticated, and I would concur. It really is a very impressive systems-type approach. Ms. Sweet and her staff do a continuous monitoring of personnel and the schedules, getting quarterly reports on class sizes and making adjustments where needed. And I have the utmost confidence in her, and I think we're on top of that. And lastly, we had a closed session dealing with a confidential employee issue.
Any questions on personnel? All right. Thank you, Mark. I don't believe there are any citizens' requests to speak. Okay, thanks, Diane. There are none. And so, now, we are at that point in the agenda where we will adjourn to closed session. We will not be returning to open session. If there is a board member that would like to make the motion that we adjourn to closed session, reading the language from the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parent 1, parent E, for the purpose of deliberating about the sale and/or purchase of public properties.
Okay, motion by Dan.
Second.
Second by Lynn. We'll do this by roll call vote.
Robson, aye.
Bell, aye.
Chernohoy, aye.
Van Lunan, aye.
German, aye.
Kaiser Schat, aye.
We are adjourned to closed session. Thank you.